I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Could wait until I get to sit down.
I'll wait till you get there.
You could wait till I sit down.
Okay, okay. Get ready.
I'm sorry, but are you ready now?
I'm ready.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is to go into closed meeting, be it resolved by the supervisors hereby interested in the closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of this business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. That's 24-14-08 and also 2014-010. 2014-010. Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or for the disposition of publicly held property whereas discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Old Charlesville Elementary School property. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation whereas such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating position of the public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisions of legal advice by such counsel. Old Southwood Road. Focus on more. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation thus specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. Those items under there will be adjustment and appeals board, board of equalization and community services board. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion and a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fix?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
We're in closed meeting. Come get you guys. Maybe a motion about a closed meeting. Second. Have a motion and a second to gratify closed meeting. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fix?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Certification of closed meeting whereas the board of supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2, that's 3711 of the Code of Virginia, requires a certification by the board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion conveying a closed meeting were discussed or considered by the board. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second certifying our closed meeting. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Fix?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
The next item on the agenda is our invocation. This is the time where we observe a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand and after that moment of silence we'll be led in a pledge by Mr. Metta's account administrator.
Let us pledge please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
We have two delegations this afternoon. Our first delegation is from the New River Health District, Virginia Department of Health, and we're fortunate to have Ms. Molly Odell, Health Director, who'll make the presentation on Lyme disease in Montgomery County. Welcome Molly.
Thank you. Chairman Brown, members of the board. I'm Dr. Molly Odell and I've been your Public Health Officer since April of 2011 and since that time I've gotten to know Montgomery County very well and love Montgomery County. There's a lot going on here as you know. So I was asked to come give you a briefing on Lyme disease and as you know part of the mandate of the Code of Virginia and our joint responsibility between the state and the locality is to do case investigations for every disease that's required in the state of Virginia. There are about 70 different communicable diseases that require contact investigation and confirmation in the state of Virginia right now. And of those diseases that are not sexually transmitted and that would be HIV, AIDS, syphilis, gonorrhea, and chlamydia, the most common disease that we worked last year was Lyme disease in Montgomery County. So your top five diseases in year 2013 and this is calendar year 2013 was Lyme diseases with 57 cases. Chronic hepatitis C with 49 cases. MRSA which is methicillin-resistant group A or STAF, 18 cases. Then campylobacter and salmonella shared fourth place each with about nine cases. And then pertussis was fifth place with seven cases last year. So obviously Lyme disease of the, we did 259 case investigations and to date 171 of those are confirmed and we use the CDC definition to confirm our cases. So what happens is our staff do the follow-up after the physician of the lab reports a case, then our staff have to go out and interview the patients and then we enter a national database and the state of Virginia epidemiologists sort of click the confirmed or not confirmed button and weekly our data is fed into the CDC for the national data. So just to give you a perspective about Lyme disease, in 2005 there were only two cases. So there's definitely been a shift in Lyme disease and that's true of the southeast. When I was in, when Lyme disease was first identified it was really truly a northeastern phenomenon and now it's our most common workup is Lyme disease. And it's probably under-reported if anything, not because the physicians aren't doing a great job because our pediatricians and primary care docs are doing a great job, but sometimes everything isn't there to satisfy the case definition. So there are probably more clinical cases than we actually keep in our confirmed database. I regret that I was on vacation last week and couldn't send you this, but I'll just give you, we had a Virginia Tech started a Masters in Public Health program four years ago and I don't know if you know that it's now accredited. And so one of the NPH students, they have to do a 300-hour practicum in the field of public health practice. And so last year one of the students took Montgomery County Lyme disease cases and mapped it on our GIS map. What we were looking for is to see if there was a particular association with in the forest or less developed property. And the fact that the student learned is, well, the person's residence is not the place where the person picked up the tick. So it really, it's a great picture and then it shows that Lyme disease is all over the county and the only association that we made was if the person lived within 200 meters of the forest edge, there were 53% of the cases were within, the residence was within 200 meters of the forest edge. So I don't know if y'all want to know the signs and symptoms and all that or if you just want to ask me some questions about Lyme disease at this point or any other thing including Ebola.
Well, I hope we don't have to worry about Ebola, but I was one of the ones who asked you to come and if you wouldn't, because part of it is we do have folks who watch this, if you would go over some of the signs and symptoms to look over and look out for?
Yes. First of all, the tick that transmit Lyme disease is the teeny tiny little deer tick. And I'd just like to say a word about prevention and the best way to avoid this disease is to prevent getting a tick bite. And so that means I've been hiking in these mountains my whole life. I'm sure I've got a low level, and a lot of us think we have already low level antibodies against Lyme disease, but that's totally kooky talking and there's a lot about Lyme disease we still don't know. But I always wear gaiters now to, so my cuffs are closed when I'm hiking out in the woods or when I'm picking a peg even. So my personal behavior's changed and one of the things the Forest Service people tell me is the clothes they're impregnated with insecticide, they swear by it, the people who are working out all day. So just a word about prevention, so clothing and the use of insecticide to avoid that tick. But the most common, the problem with so many of these tick-borne diseases is they're flu-like illness and everybody's so tired of hearing about flu-like illness, but that's it. The pathognomonic sign and the way the diagnosis can be made is with this bull's eye rash that people get after the tick bite. And so I have pictures that I brought and there's about six ways it can look, and I can pass this around. This is a brand-new publication by the CDC just February of '14. There's a great primer for everybody on tick-borne diseases, what the symptoms are and what they look like. But a bull's eye lesion around the tick bite is clearly a diagnostic criteria for Lyme disease. And then usually people will come in within three to 30 days and they'll complain not knowing whether or not they've had a tick bite or not unfortunately is flu-like symptoms. So that's headache, fever, joint aches, muscle aches, and just kind of feeling crummy. Sometimes people will have a swollen lymph node or a few swollen lymph nodes and sometimes they won't. Then of course and what has got the most people spooked these days is when they miss that initial phase of Lyme disease and years or months later come down with more transient symptoms like cardiac manifestations, irradiate heartbeat, actually pain, pericarditis in the heart, and then crippling arthritis is probably what people hear about the most with chronic Lyme disease. There are other neurological manifestations, so painful nerve line, the how the nerve falls in the body, that whole area can be painful or folks can lose the ability to actually feel things or change their sensation. So there are a lot of disparate signs or symptoms of Lyme disease and that's why people are so concerned about it. And we obviously are seeing plenty of cases in the southeast and plenty of cases in Montgomery County. It is treatable and now just this year the CDC now recommends that if you know that you've had a tick bite embedded in you for more than 48 to 72 hours, it's, we're automatically recommending treatment. So sort of prophylactically before you get symptoms. And that's new, nobody used to do that. It is treated with OxyCycline and you hear all sorts of stories about Lyme disease because there are lots of people with lots of opinions. The New Yorker had an article on Lyme disease about a year and a half ago and it was the best review articles of all the different ways people are approaching Lyme disease. And I believe there's a lot we don't know about it, just like there's still a lot we don't know about a whole lot of diseases. Our infectious disease experts at both our BlueScout and Korean system pretty much follow the CDC guidelines and are excellent diagnosticians. So whenever there's a question, I usually refer people, individuals to one of our infectious disease specialists in the region. So we know it's here and people are getting sick from it and sometimes people will have it more than once. So you, people may ask you about that, that does happen.
Questions? Is it, when you look at the dry season versus the wet season, I mean it's been awful dry, do we, just the same amount of ticks and the disease went around depending on regardless of what the weather is?
Great question. It used to, but we don't see, it used to be we only saw Lyme and rabies in the summer months and now it's just sort of the same all year round. And I don't know if you're aware, but veterinarians are automatically screening for Lyme disease every year when you take your dog into vet. And I think that's sort of like the canary in the mine shaft. They're, they are seeing it 12 times more than we are. Whenever I take my dog in, my vet always wants to know how many cases there have been in each locality around the area. But we know that it's very prevalent among animals and they're treating Lyme disease. Every time a dog is tested, they'll treat them again because dogs seem to be getting it more than once too.
And there's a vaccine, I've had my dogs vaccinated, I lost a dog to Lyme disease and so after that we vaccinated the other animals that we had.
That's, it's real. And some people attribute this to climate change and it may be because what we know is that it used to be the life cycle of the organism that is transmitted by the tick didn't have a place to reproduce because the white-footed mouse didn't live down here. Well, now the white-footed mouse and some other things live down here and the life cycle of this organism is perpetuated. So we're seeing it year-round too. So prevention is definitely our message of course in public health and awareness. Tick checks, you know, I don't know how many times I tell parents, it's great to go outside, it's better to go outside and enjoy nature than not, but part of the deal needs to be a tick check when you come in or finish your hike or whatever and then before you go to bed. So twice, two tick checks after you've been out. That's what we recommend. And that's what I do myself. And the ticks, you know, they want to, they go to the places you don't want to look. We have not had any Ebola suspects in New River and I hope it stays that way. But we are getting, I probably get three emails a day with updated information.
Lots of exciting challenges.
Never boring.
No more questions, comments? Dr. Molly Odell, I'd like to say we really appreciate you coming, sharing your time this evening with us and especially for the information that you shared regarding Lyme disease.
Well, thank you all. Thank the board very much for your support. Appreciate it.
We'll try to get you in here before three years go by again too. I couldn't believe that when she said, "It's been three years." Really? Wow.
We planned for me to come introduce myself.
I know. That was just a couple of weeks ago. Thanks Molly.
Our next delegation will be from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. David Clark from VDOT will provide us an update on the roads and project issues in Montgomery County.
Thank you. Good evening. Couple of updates on where we are on some of the projects we've been working on over the last month. So probably the biggest one is the parking ride that was recently completed and opened that replaced the parking ride that was at Concourse and Falling Range School. It's being relocated to Norman Street and True or wherever this, but I'll go ahead and explain we opened it up I think two weeks ago and finally the last car that was parked in the old one is now out. Apparently someone had been using it.
Before I forget David, that is the fastest project that I've ever seen.
We weren't really the authorities in that.
That VDOT has, you know, responded to. Usually they say, "Well, we're going to move it." It would be like five years before they moved it.
Well, the chief engineer and permissioner said at the six-year plan public hearing back in June that the money was appropriate and we would do it in a month. We sort of wondered where he got that number from and then it was a rush to get it and everything worked out fine. We had the right of way, we had no utility problems, we had a couple close calls with utilities, but it all worked out. We had a fantastic contractor in C.R. Henderson, Charlie Henderson is one of that, C.R. Henderson Enterprises. He's our normal hired equipment contractor that we have under contract now. So he does a lot of work. He's done the work, he did the work on One Way Forest as a matter of fact, that pipe. Ended up putting in that pipe and did a couple, he's done a lot of pipe in the county. Did that Norwood paving, did the asphalt, did a wonderful job. So yeah, everything fell into place and we're very happy to have it done before kids get back, which I believe is tomorrow.
That's right.
The tough part has been, you know, getting the people who are not used to, not from the area, many different, various megabus drivers, you know, they use different people. And so just getting the word out to them of where the new one is and we're using message boards, but it all seems to have fallen into place now. So yeah, we're very happy about that. And that is a temporary, it's still going to be there for a couple of years, but temporary in the sense that we're working on plans for one that may, I'm not sure how many spaces it has, but it's going to be quite a bit bigger than that one. And on the same general spot just behind that common one. So we're working on the design of that and the additional right-of-way that would be needed. We're working on that right now.
Well, if I can interrupt one more time and I was going to cover some of this under my report later, but had an opportunity this afternoon to meet Jennifer Mitchell who's the director of DRPT and talked to her after our meeting and thanked her for all of DRPT's support.
Yeah, they were showing us some of the findings.
Well, everybody knows about our parking rights. It's amazing apparently how many people in Ridge.
They have parking rides up in around Fredericksburg that are over 1,000 spaces.
Yeah.
About 75, 60, 71.
I conveyed the board's thanks for that and I also conveyed to her VDOT's hard work too because you guys busted it on that project.
Yeah, we did. We, we, and I were catching up on all the stuff that we weren't doing while we were working on it. You know, really our guys, we did help move the haul in, but again it was C.R. Henderson Enterprises that did the bulk of the work out there as far as actual equipment, moving dirt, placing asphalt and stuff like that. So I mean we did have a lot of man hours in it ourselves and we're, like I said, we are trying to get back on track with some of the maintenance things. One of which is Blue Springs Road, that's a revenue sharing project that is under construction right now. So basically they've just replaced the pipe, they still got, if you go out there, it looks pretty rough. They just really started a couple of weeks ago, so they cleared all the trees and brushed edges where they're going to widen a little bit, put some ditches in, they've got some pipe in. But hopefully in about a month or so we should, we should be done with that. That's a revenue sharing project to Surratt Street, about a half a mile of Blue Springs Road which is right there near the Pulasi County lines or in the Snowville area. If you go down a trail just like you're going to cross a little river on 693 and take a left, goes out that way across that new bridge that was never placed in trust, past that into this range of Little Montgomery area. Upcoming stuff that we've got, we're sending out a news thing on that. We're going to have Route 612, I'm sure that name of that road, just past the pilot post office, if you go straight past it, don't turn, but just straight past that, we're going to be replacing some pipe out there that will, the road won't be closed, we'll have to be flagging traffic. We're not going to start until probably after buses and people get to work, but it will probably go into the evening hours because to get this done we're going to try to use as much daylight as we possibly can. So the next several days, there's two locations, so just be aware if you're out in that area and you see traffic back up, it's because we're having to flag the traffic. During the middle of the day shouldn't be that bad, but we are going to have to work towards the, towards the evening and we'll work with the school bus schedule and if people know enough about it, they can get around, avoid it using Gold Rush or cut around. But that's just something to be on the lookout for. Some of the things that were asked about last time, there was a request for no outlet dead inside on White Oak Drive, that is up. There was a request for pavement marking on Route 8 to, that has been approved and those will be in two sets of 45-degree areas. We're going to do it both ways because as you're coming into, first of all gets two ends and it goes back down to one, so we're going to do it on both sides. So that should be done probably in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
And I believe that was all the requests for maintenance issues. We've been doing just the normal thing over the last, you know, the gravel roads and getting some brush cutting and a couple other pipes. Oh, that other thing, another big pipe project we did was out 609, Bonner, Sharon and Boone Road, out sort of in the Charlesville area, way back off the road in Charlesville. We replaced permanently, we had some flooding, done some temporary replacement. We more permanently put in some large pipe, about seven of the culverts up through that Boone area. Mr. Creed might know some of the people up there. We've seen our equipment over there in the last couple of weeks, that's what they've been doing. I think they're all done with that now. I'll take any questions.
Mr. Creed?
One thing that I actually asked for at the last meeting was the traffic count on the Hard Service Road, where the Hard Surface Road ends on Craig's Mountain Road.
Right. I understand you were talking to John Jones about that?
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of different people and I've got at least four different answers.
Okay.
Like there's, I say one that's up to date that, you know, they went back a couple of years.
Okay. I'll bring everything we have and the board probably knows that Montgomery County has a transportation safety committee that meets four times a year and if you're going to be at that.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll get you that information for tomorrow.
And that is one thing and the other thing is, is Mount Pleasant Road. We've got any starting time for?
They should be all moving in on that, the project down there because I thought, they have until March, but I had heard that they were going to try to get in there and finish before winter.
What about the straightening of the road where we've got the revenue sharing money in?
That we're starting, we're getting ready to get the environmental permits and stuff going on that and any kind of, we'll probably get some construction easements. You know, all we have is a 30-foot prescriptive easement right now. It's not even right-of-way. So we're starting to work on the easements and environmental stuff with that.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing. Mr. King? Just one thing, on the Lowwater Bridge on Fairview Church, have you checked?
They did check that. It's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah, they didn't see any problems with it. Might be a little bit of debris, but it's, I thought it's in good shape.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Fix?
Can you give us an update staff report on the Fire Service Road off 460, like since we found out that VDOT owns the first part of the road and the Forest Service owns the rest and there seem to be some wanting to work together to get the maintenance issues straightened out with all the ruts?
Historically on that, I went back quite a ways. When that was built, the Forest Service Road connected to 460. 460 was, I don't know if it may have been the forelanding of it or just in the relocation of it, we bought the right-of-way to relocate it. And this is another similar instance to Reese Mountain Road where we bought the right-of-way and relocated private road, a road that wasn't a state road. And there's a note on the plans that says, fortunately it is easy to maintain it. So just as they maintained the old one, they have an easement to maintain this one. And VDOT has never maintained that section of road even though it's on right-of-way. It's, it was only on right-of-way because we had to relocate their road to a better position for site visits. In years past, we have done work on Forest Service Road and built it for it, but we've never maintained that section of road.
Well, so does the Forest, I mean where are we now, like the gentleman that's trying to get up there to the cemetery and going through the ruts and all that, where are we with trying to get it resolved? Like are you saying that VDOT's not going to do it, so the Forest Service does need to do it?
The Forest Service should do it. The Forest Service should do it, yeah, they've been maintaining it, the Forest should be maintaining it, 'cause it is a Forest Service Road, it's not a VDOT road.
So...
It's, it's like an entrance, just, there's like, you know, most people's entrances come down to cross the right-of-ways, it's just like an entrance crossing the right-of-way.
So, so the state or VDOT does not own the first two hundred feet of the road? The Forest Service owns the whole thing? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, no, I'm saying the Forest Service, VDOT has right-of-way that goes out a little jag off the main with the 460 right-of-way, that was purchased to locate, relocate their road. And it's located on a right-of-way just like any number of, everyone's entrance crosses the right-of-way. But VDOT doesn't maintain everything that's on VDOT right-of-way. We maintain state-maintained roads. Roads that are, are, won't be their primary system or secondary system, but that, it's not a road, they don't have a secondary route number, it's not part of 460. It's a Forest Service Road that just happens, crosses a right-of-way. So, it's the Forest Service's, just like all the rest of the road.
Okay, so, I guess I wasn't, I didn't really realize that had been commi, so, has it officially been communicated back to the Forest Service that they can maintain that whole road?
We're, we're still, I'm still talking to them, trying to find, it's probably in some kind of project document from nineteen sixty-seven, which is when that project was done. He's saying there's no record of it. I'm saying there's a note on the plans that says easement for Forest Service to maintain the road. And I'm going on historical practice that we've never maintained it.
Okay.
So now that everybody's budget is being cut, they're looking to, there's like on Reese Mountain, which was never maintained by VDOT.
Okay, so, what should I tell the gentleman that's been concerned about this now for a few months? Like, I should tell him that you are talking to the Forest Service people?
Yes.
And that it seems to be, from what you can tell, that the Forest Service needs to be maintaining the whole road?
Yes.
Is that what I should tell him?
Yes, the Forest Service likely should be maintaining the whole road.
Okay, was that your understanding, Mr. Meadows, when the ranger, I, I'm just confused, 'cause I thought it was worked out that who owned what, but it sounds like maybe not.
Well, I do think they have worked out who owns what, but I think it's a matter, as David said, of who has been responsible for maintaining that area. There are situations, as David said, where VDOT owns right-of-way, but they've given permission for others to have access through that right-of-way, and they're also responsible for maintaining that section of right-of-way. So, I know last we had talked, they had determined who owned what, but they were still working together to determine who had ultimate responsibility for the maintenance.
So now, I guess, like, to get anything done, I need to go back to the Forest Service? Is that who I need to?
If, if, I'm sure that VDOT's gonna be working with them as well, but if you wanna continue your follow-up, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions? I don't think we have any other questions, but we thank you for coming, sharing your time with us in the update.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. The next item, addendum, yeah, we do have an addendum to add to the consent agenda.
Figure of public address.
Oh, thank you. The public address session is, is now open. Anyone who'd like to address the board's supervisors about any business dealing with the county can do so at this time, and you need to push the podium, and you have five Well, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public address session and move to the addendum.
And we do have one addendum to add to the consent agenda, and this is for recovered cost for fire and rescue for appropriating some facility, some money for procurement of foam for our volunteer fire departments, and they're gonna reimburse us for it.
I guess a motion to add it to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, please.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to add this item to the consent agenda. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is the consent agenda. Move approve. Have a motion in a second. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, old business. Ordinance amending Chapter Two. An ordinance amending Chapter Two entitled Administration of the Code of the County of Montgomery, Virginia, amending Section Two dash thirty-two and Two dash thirty-three to allow persons owning or leasing a motor vehicle who previously filed a personal property tax return to not be required to file another return if no change in status and by establishing a monetary civil penalty instead of a criminal violation for failing to file a return.
Summed up.
Second. Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item, new business, subject A, school operating fund FY fourteen-year in encumbrance and carryover. Move approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Is it any discussion?
Can we just talk about this for a little bit? I wanna make sure I understand what we've got. Is this, 'cause at one point in time during the budget talks, I thought there wasn't gonna be very much of a, a carryover, that was gonna be a very small and insignificant amount, and this seems to be a pretty large amount.
It's my understanding from the attached information we're giving, this is all encumbrance, is that this is...
Yeah, it's like purchase orders in the pipeline.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Because I, I haven't watched the school board's meeting, but it's my understanding that there was an additional one point eight, this is one point two, of rollover money. I, I haven't watched the whole school board meeting, but that was my understanding, that they're gonna have one point eight million dollars of rollover money.
And this is, this is money that was in their budget for the fiscal year, two thousand fourteen fiscal year, that was appropriated for purchases and, and services before June thirtieth, but just as we have to do with the county, you have to roll the funds forward to carry those purchase orders into the new year because they're encumbrances that haven't been met yet.
And that's, that's what we're...
That's what this piece is.
Clarify and make sure that, because you had those two different things out there, I think, at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject B, policy on board electronic participation in board meetings. This is a resolution establishing a written policy for the participation in board of supervisors' meetings through electronic communications from a remote location. Move approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to find, at one time, I know we were discussing, we were discussing how many times a year that, that could carry forward.
In the policy, it says that you can, you can do it only two times in the calendar year, and that's limited by the state law requires, you can't do it any more than two times.
That's two times for the board to do it, not two times for each member to do it.
No, two times for any individual board.
Okay, it means that each member, he could do it two times, he, Matt could do it two times, at two different sets of meetings.
Correct.
Okay, it means altogether.
We're not just talking like a meeting like this, I know we're including this, but it could be a meeting where you guys are meeting somewhere else.
Oh, okay.
Like a joint meeting with the, you know, with some other body, or, or, you know, like you say, a meeting is anytime more than two of you guys meet, so it could be something like that as well.
And it can't be because you're on a vacation, it has to be for...
Correct.
Some kind of emergency situation, and also, the board has to okay that the person can do it, correct?
Correct, and, and the reason, and you have to use the policy to determine whether you okay it or not, and you specifically cannot include, when you're making that determination, who's making the request, nor what's on the agenda.
And to make it clear to people, this came, this came from the General Assembly, saying localities could choose to do this.
Correct.
This is where this authority came from, it's not something that we just start at local level and say we're gonna do.
Correct, so if the board member said, "Hey, I wanna, I'm, I'm on vacation next day, and I wanna tune into the meeting," this board should vote no, because that, that would violate the policy. But if someone called in and said, "I've been out, I'm out of town because I, my mother is sick and I'm taking care of her," then that would be a reason that would be authorized.
Would a, would a personal matter, the way the language is in number one, it says personal matter, would that cover like works, work contingencies as well?
It could, yeah.
Like, I might have to travel for a conference, or Chris might be just physically not present in Montgomery County for a trial or something like that, that would be possible?
It could.
I guess, I, I don't have problems with the personal emergency, I just say, for work-related, if I, I, I don't, I wouldn't be voting in favor of that, but if, let's say that I came down with cancer, had chemotherapy, wasn't supposed to be around people, I might wanna participate in that matter, or one of y'all might wanna participate, but I guess, and that had hip replacement surgery not too long ago, and Matt battled chingles, I think, and so did Gary, so there might be those type of things that, I, as a board member, and all of those, I think, would be appropriate.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, most of the reasons they have down there are health-related, but as a board member, like, as Matt pointed out, it does say personal matter too.
Right, it does.
That's under the code, and let's say you unexpectedly got called out on business, and you had to attend, and there was a meeting you really wanted to participate in, I think that would probably be something that, that would work.
Let me clarify this too. That does not waive the fact that you still have to have a quorum in order to have a present quorum.
Right.
In order to have, go forward with a meeting.
Correct, and so what that means is you can't have four of us make that request, and now we have three here. Correct. You have to at least have four here before anyone can make that request. So the person who's remotely dialing in cannot be the one who makes that quorum.
Right, and so that vote, if it were last minute or something like that, the vote to accept or reject would be made at that meeting?
Correct.
So how would the, I would assume there'd be some sort of prior planning in, in the, in case somebody would have to set up the link right there?
Right, what the policy says is that they need to make the request the day of, on or before the day of the meeting they're gonna miss, and so what they would do is they'd call Chair Brown, and let's say Chair Brown's out of town, not available, then they would call Mary, that's Vice Chair, but either way, they'd call the leadership of the board, and they would make this request, and then, then they would relay this to the board at the meeting, they'd be ready to connect, and, and, but if the board said no, then they would not be connected, if the board said yes, then we still gotta be able to connect, and let's say we have a malfunction, and they're not being able to connect, and they're not gonna be able to participate, 'cause it clearly says that you also have to be able to hear them, not just you guys, but everybody in this chamber.
Other questions?
Let's hope we won't have to use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, not, have it clearly explained before we go and vote on it.
Right.
And then understand what it is.
And remember, on the personal matter, you have to tell what that matter is, because it, you have to, you have to come forward, and that's gotta be put in the minutes. With specificity is the word that's used under, under state code.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And a motion to go into work session, be it resolved that the board of supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the following. Number one, maternity, paternity benefits. Two, sponsorship policy. Motion in a second? Second. Have a motion in a second to go into work session, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item this evening is the, the discussion of maternity and paternity benefits. Carol is gonna lead the discussion on that, with Angie and Karen are here also. Staff spent quite a bit of time pulling together some information from various sources on this issue, and I'm gonna let Carol walk through that with the group.
I apologize we didn't get it to you sooner, we were literally doing edits up till late this afternoon, so it's hot off the press, even though it might not feel that way.
I'm good, I'm good. Hadn't changed in the last hour, has it? Okay.
Ain't never tell ya.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. What we wanted to do tonight was go over, we were asked to do or to take a look at what the fiscal impact might be and what those issues are related to implementation of the benefit, and so I wanted to go through how we defined what the benefit was, the steps we took, what the methodology was, how did we go about costing this, and so you would clearly know what we did, and you would know whether you agree with it, or you disagree with it, or want some additional detail, but this is the way we approached looking at that question. Now, what you have before you is a copy of the presentation, which is more of a summary. The paper, or the report that I passed out has more of the detail about the actual calculation, and some tables in there about how this was actually calculated. The first thing we did was, and it's the first step in any way you go about looking at a fiscal analysis, is to go to the program. What is the program? How are you defining it? What are the elements of it? And that starts with your base of how you then move forward in order to establish the cost. So what we tried to look at was, what we already have in place that addresses some of these issues, and so I think most of you are familiar with the Family Medical Leave Act. It is a broader act that uses this one benefit, it does protect a job for a twelve-week period, but it's not a paid benefit. We also looked at, there is a proposed Federal Employees Paid for Rental Leave Act that is not yet, that I'm aware of, been passed, but it also looks at the benefit, and it provides in the legislation a benefit for a paid four-week period. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Push it down a little bit.
Turn it, which way?
Down. There you go. Now, don't talk.
Talk on top of it, that's, okay.
Yep. So, I'm sorry, Carol, could you repeat what you just said about the allows for a, something allows for a paid?
The Proposed Federal Employees Paid for Rental Leave Act...
Okay.
...defines the paid benefit as four weeks. So what, in essence, we did in order to establish the cost was go, okay, we already have a framework for FMLA, that's a twelve-week unpaid period, and then we added on that the four-week period that we got compared to the federal employees paid for rental leave back. That's what we did in this analysis. We did, however, go across the Commonwealth, we asked the Virginia Institute of Government through an inquiry to ask Virginia localities if they had such a benefit so that we could look at how they implemented it, you know, what, what was any history in terms of cost, but we did not identify any Virginia localities that had that benefit. Okay, so what does the program design end up being? Well, we took four weeks of paid parental leave, as I said, as a part of FMLA. And parental leave is defined in this context as just maternity or paternity leave only. So, as you'll see down through a number of these points, in terms of what the design is, I've tried to mark those in the parentheses that show that that's already a part of the FMLA legislation. So, an employee would have to have worked one year to be eligible for FMLA, and at least 1,250 hours in the previous 12 months. That's FMLA regulation, and that's what we use to you. Both married and unmarried would receive the benefits, adoptions would be covered, female employees in the hybrid VRS status would file for short-term disability, which would cover 60% of this benefit, and the remaining 40% would be attributed to the four weeks. The hybrid VRS status, if you remember, is a state requirement for the hire of new employees. Keep in mind, that does not apply to law enforcement. Law enforcement is not eligible to be under the hybrid plan, they have to remain as Plan Two. And so you will either have Plan One and Plan Two in law enforcement, then VRS status is hybrid, or all other new employees. Again, I don't need to read all of these, but you basically maintain the same thing as FMLA, all your accruals for your current benefits, any salary increases that would be granted would be provided. Spouses would share the four weeks of paid leave, that is an FMLA requirement. The frequency of use would follow the same regulations as FMLA. The employees who have been working second jobs would follow the current county policy, which requires that you be working the second job before you take parental leave, and you continue that job, but do not add any additional hours. That's the design that we looked at when we went to put numbers to what this program might be. One of the things I wanted to do is just to remind everybody what the leave benefits are currently, and look at how this adds to that number if you're looking at four weeks. Again, law enforcement, and that would be Plan One or Plan Two. And I've looked at an employee after 12 months' worth of service, assuming they didn't take any leave within those 12 months, and that's because your eligibility runs that 12-month period for FMLA. And annual leave, you would get, an employee would get 96 hours after 12 months. Sick leave, they get 120 hours. There are 96 holidays, and that's a total of 312. And the hybrid plan, it's 240, but as you recall, under the hybrid plan, you have PTO, paid time off, which can be used as either annual or sick leave, and you also have access to a six-month disability plan. And the proposed leave, when added to this, adds, if you did four weeks, would add another 160 hours. Now, this does not include any leave that is being transferred in from other employment sources, which is allowed under our policy. And again, PTO is unrestricted, it has the same as annual leave, sick leave is a restricted So what do we do in terms of the methodology? Well, we collected data on births among county employees over the past 10 years. Now, the data that we were able to capture was only those employees on our health insurance, because that's what we had available and we could document. So, in the numbers that we came up with, they could very well be understated, and in fact, we know of some that weren't included, but we don't know how many, because they could not carry our health insurance and still be eligible for this benefit. So there's some flaws in the data that we used, because it's not complete. We also collected data on employees by age group, and we did a five-year look back, and then we tried to look forward in the future, because that has an impact on trying to predict if these costs will accelerate in the future, or could you anticipate them to stay more stable over the next few years? Then we identified the specific factors that we use in this cost analysis. So, this is a chart Angie prepared, it's one of my favorites, it's nice and colorful and interesting, but it's the births over 10 years by department. And if you see the peaks all the way to the back, well, that's the sheriff's office. And so, the benefit itself will have a significant impact on the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office is one of the largest departments. It also is the department where you tend to see a larger base of younger employees. Now, this is, this is the age trend chart, and if you look at the tallest peak, that's 50-plus. So the workforce in the county tends to be, based on these groupings, a larger number of people are 50-plus, and we're getting older.
Which, Carol showed me this chart, brings up a whole host of other issues that we'll be working on in the months ahead, too.
That's a whole different presentation, but part of what we wanted to look at, and the way we got to 2019 was, you know, not a whole, a complete analysis. We took everybody who was here on 2014, their age group, and we said, if all these same people stayed here for five years, what would these groupings look like? Well, you'd have nearly half of your workforce would be over 50. Now, what tends to happen with this is that you're probably not gonna see that, and the sheriff's office is probably the reason, because what tends to happen is you have retirements at a younger age. But the second piece of that means that these age groups, the 20 to 24, 25 to 29, and 30 to 34, are gonna increase likely in the next five years. So, when you look at the numbers and you do a look back for the past 10 years on number of births, then you look forward to see, well, what's that impact gonna be in the next five years? I don't know, but what this suggests is, given the age groups and where they would age out, you're likely to see, particularly in the sheriff's office, more retirements and more younger people coming in at those lower age groups. So, of the birth data collected, we just ran an average. We said, okay, the average over 10 years is 10. 60% of those would tend to be in the sheriff's office. Almost 44% of the employees in the age group of 34 and under are in the sheriff's office, that's why we're projecting that's gonna increase as people age out and retire. We also looked at the hourly rates to try and determine, okay, what kind of hourly rate are we gonna use to project some of this? We looked at the median, we looked at the mean, and amazingly enough, they were actually very close together, so we just selected the lowest rate and used that in terms of the tables to cost. So, here are the factors. Paid parental leave benefit, 160 hours is what we used. Ten births per year, six in the sheriff's office, you see the hourly rates. Now, the issue you need to keep in mind is compensatory time in the sheriff's office is calculated at time and a half. And so when someone's out, and someone else needs to fill in for them, and they're working overtime, they accrue compensatory time at time and a half. And we did meet with the sheriff's office to make sure that we understood how their shifts worked and how these rates were calculated. So, once you start looking at compensatory time, you have other issues that have a fiscal impact. The sheriff's office employees currently accrue compensatory, have accrued compensatory time hours totaling over 7,100. The payout amount currently, this is on the books, for these employees is $160,000. For law enforcement, federal law requires that if hours accrued, an employee accrues hours above 480, they must be paid. Otherwise, they're accrued compensatory time. And if you look at the chart, you can see that the most hours are in the patrol division, and the second highest are in the jail. They have more employees, they're also 24/7 operations. We also thought it was important to bring to your attention the fact that we do have employees who accrue hours above their maximum amounts currently, and with that, they're losing hours each December 31st. If you're over the cap, you lose the hours. So, as of December 31st this past year, we had employees who lost 1,583 hours of annual leave, and 4,565 hours of sick leave. Again, the sheriff's office represents the largest percentage of those hours lost. Now, if you look at the chart here, generally, it's been over 50%, and as high as 60%. Those hours lost have gone down in December 2013, but if you recall, the board provided $55,000 to buy down some of those compensatory time hours. That may have resulted in employees then taking more of their annual sick leave and still losing it. So, with that, the methodology, the program design we used, the methodology we put together, and those cost factors we showed you, we've estimated that four weeks of a parental leave benefit can cost $72,000. This amount will increase if you have employees who take four weeks. Then they have three weeks saved up, and employees in the sheriff's office primarily, because if they extend any of their leave time out, you're paying other employees compensatory time at time and a half in order to fill the gap of the workflow. Again, the sheriff's office is the most significant, and of that 72,000 amount, just for the four-week period, the estimated cost of this office is $56,000 out of the 72. Again, here's an example, you take more, more time off, it's gonna increase the compensatory time. And with the compensatory time accruals in the sheriff's office of over 7,000, then you can expect that there could necessitate cash payout balances as employees begin to move up to that 480 cap, and where the federal government requires it be paid out. That's all we did in this analysis, is look at those things and those items. Again, the paper that's here has broken down the calculations and tables. I know this is a lot of stuff for you all to get all at one time, and you probably need some time to digest it, and look at it, and come up with your other questions or other issues, and so I'll be glad to try and address what we can now, or if you'd like for us to come back at another time and you provide us with questions, we'll be glad to see if we can address those.
Yes, all right, May. I just wanted, first of all, thank you guys. I mean, this is, this is extremely thorough, and it is, it is a lot to take in. To me, this seems like a really good step in the right direction. I mean, personally, I think I would love to see a little bit more ambitious plan. Four weeks is, is great. But, I mean, I would like to see something a little bit longer than that, six to eight weeks perhaps, but that might not be in the realm of possibility right now. The one thing that, that I'd like to just kind of bring up is that, is, what was it? Oh, the FMLA required, which of course, we're not bound by because we're setting another policy, right? We're just using that as a guideline for how we're constructing this, is about spouses sharing the parental leave, is that, you know, I understand that's, that's part of that, but, you know, if they're individual employees, they should be entitled to their own individual benefits. And so if we were to adopt this, about this policy, I'd like to see that part kind of stricken. I can't imagine that would be a tremendous added cost, but it seems to me, that doesn't seem fair if they're, they're getting their own, they're entitled to their own health insurance and everything else, they shouldn't have to share this, just because there, should be some sort of marriage penalty on this. So, so I'll just put that in, out there for, for future consideration, so. Yeah. That's, that's all I have right now. I mean, I, I think it's great, I think it's a great step in the right direction. I mean, I've been championing this for, for a little while now, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we can, we can move forward with this.
Well, I see, I guess, a little difficulty, I mean, when it comes to the compensatory time accruals in the sheriff's office, totaling more than 7,000 hours in excess of $160,000. That's a, a whole lot of money, and when you have two or three deputies out on maternity or paternity leave, you just can't go out and hire a part-time people. It's just not like working at McDonald's, where you can say, take Joe, and in two hours you can put him on the prize. But you gotta have a certified person out there performing those duties and things like this. So therefore, probably in his case, if a couple of his people were off, he would just assign a couple more people to take it to Slack, which those people wouldn't be paid overtime, but they'd be paid comp time, compensatory time, which would cause those hours to, to go up. And it would get people closer to the, that 480 threshold. And once we got to a certain point, we will have to come up with some money to buy some of that down. I think we, it's either $50,000, $55,000, I think it was last year, year before last, that we, they had so much on the books, we bought some of it down. You can look at 7,000 hours out there, and in excess of $160,000, I mean, that might not seem, not seem like much, but that's a whole lot. And when you implement something along these lines, I can see that growing much faster. So, that's just something to put out there to think about, too, until we come back to this. Probably, if I was the sheriff, I would probably, wouldn't worry about this too much now, but as we aged out, the young people are in there, and when you age out in the next four or five years, some of the older people and the younger people get there, and I could see the birth, births going up in the younger departments.
Yeah.
And I can see this costing a lot more money down the road. But, it's something to be thinking about.
Sorry, the only thing I'll say to respond to that is that I think it's probably a lot cheaper to, to be talking about compensatory time, especially given that our salaries are, are lower than competing localities, and that this is a perk that will hopefully retain deputies and other county employees in ways that we can't compete. I mean, if we were the only, literally, I mean, that, that's kind of shocking to me, the only locality in Virginia that would be doing this. I mean, that, that's, that's a real benefit, especially to, to younger employees, younger skilled employees who want a work-life balance. I mean, if you read any literature on what people graduating college, high school now are looking for in a job, is they're, they're looking for that work-life balance better than, better than a, an increased salary and a heavier workload. So this is something that I think would make Montgomery County a much more attractive place to work, both not, not just on the sheriff's side, but in, but in every, every instance.
One of the things that we've done, and we did last year, was where we basically ate the increased cost to allow people to, to have, keep the family planning, and it didn't go up for them. And I've had a lot of deputies who've mentioned that as a big thing. And when you say that, are we gonna be able to do that next year and the, the following year, when you start talking about 160?
So, this is something that I think would make Montgomery County a much more attractive place to work, both not, not just on the sheriff's side, but in, but in every, every instance.
One of the things that we've done, we did last year was where we basically ate the increased cost to allow people to, to have, keep the family planning and it didn't go up for them. And I've had a lot of deputies who've mentioned that as a big thing. And when you say that, are we going to be able to do that next year and the following year? When you start talking about $160,000 in liability, I, I wonder about that. The other thing is, and I guess I am out of touch. I've been really fortunate. I, I, it's knock on wood, I've had five, six days in 21 years. And I think I took a couple of days off when each time one of my boys were born. And so, I've been very fortunate. But it, I understand what Matt's saying, times are changing. And, and I guess I'm becoming older and more of a dinosaur. But, I, so this may be something that is going to recruit younger people and keep younger deputies. I'm not certain. But, I do recognize exactly what Bill's saying. There's a lot of positions that you just can't suddenly fill and either you're going to have to have qualified people working overtime and to fill in those positions. You can't just go out and hire a part-time sheriff's deputy to fill in. And that may infect morale as well when you start having to work people overtime to fill in those positions. I'm not certain.
I'd like to, I'd actually like to hear from Sheriff see what he has to say about this kind of something for us to, to chew on a little bit.
Yeah, come on, Sheriff. You get to be the greatest impact upon your department, anyway.
Well, Mr. Crete, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you, you may have. I know that a lot of this, primarily, all of this discussion tonight has been focused on the Sheriff's Office. And the unfortunate thing is, is we don't have an overtime, we don't have an overtime budget. And I've tried diligently over my, in my tenure as sheriff, not come to this board and I absolutely had to and ask that you buy down the compensatory time. A lot of compensatory time is derived simply from the holidays we get. If they're out, they still earn the holiday. So, you look at the month of November and December with Thanksgiving up through Christmas and New Year's and going into the new year, you get 96. Something breaking out, wasn't it?
Nobody was breaking out, I don't think they were breaking in.
They're looking at flat rate of 96 hours of cure time. That's provided the government doesn't give us another day. We address this in many different ways. We have, obviously, it's the, it's the deputy sheriff's time. They're earned, they earn it. They're entitled to take it when they want it and I can't force them to take it when I choose for them to take it. So, with that being said, we do have a right to adjust these shift schedules. So, a lot of times that we have, if that's what we have to do, we mandate by policy that we have a supervisor plus four, five people on duty at all times. And you get five people on duty and then all of a sudden you get an ECO to Norfolk. And you're five hours into your shift, you have to drive over to Norfolk with a, with a patient who was suffering from mental illness, drop them off at a treatment center there and then turn around, drive back, or Virginia Beach or wherever it's at, and then turn around, drive back on the same day. The minimum, two people have to go on that transport. So, therefore, you're looking at working with possibly three people out of a county this size and with the population of 95,000 we have, and that's just not safe. So, a lot of times we have to call people in, ask people to stay over. And it's one thing after another that compounds it. Quite honestly, I'd like to see this board consider making every pay, every holiday for the Sheriff's Office another paid day. And that way, they're going to cure that additional day, 12-hour day at time and a half, they get paid for. That would help a lot. We're looking at the, and I'm skipping way out on to this, I believe what Angie and Carol called it was Family Medical Leave Act, it was maternity, maternity leave. And when Chief Denton and I were sitting back there talking about it a little bit, and I think we mentioned it to Angie and Karen Edmonds, I think you're separating, creating a different class of employees and therefore, there may be some form. And I'd like, and I'm just suggesting, I'm just saying that there is. I'd like for the county attorney to possibly look in or Ms. Edmonds to look into the possibility for not creating a situation where we're discriminating against other employees by dividing a different set of standards for a certain age group of employees between 18 and 36 years of age that may not be available to the rest of the employees all the time, or not be applicable to all the employees at the same time. So, that's something.
It is applicable, I mean, because you could, you could adopt at any age.
Well, you can, theoretically, the natural childbirth years between, well, I was like, like 18 and 36 years of age, but I know it goes beyond and below that. But that's the natural thought that I would have. I, that is almost, and I'll, I'll check with, with some folks that I worked with as well. But I, I think we're creating a separate class of people to do it that doesn't apply to the whole Sheriff's Office. And I may be wrong. But, Mr. Crete, questions?
Just thank you, I just wanted to...
It's difficult. We've had three out in court services, literally, almost one week apart on Family Medical Leave Act and they're all babies. And hey, I feel great, people have families, have time with their families and have time to bond with their families. I know probably many of us in this room did not have the same opportunity. I think I took one week off for each of the, the birth of each of my children and that's about it. And my wife was already getting rid of me before that biggest thing was. But, if there's any way that the county could help us in making every holiday a paid day, that way we'll, we're still going to occur compensatory time, but we're not going to occur it at the rate that we are now. Because you take 96 hours of bleeding is, and I'm not sitting here with the chart in front of me or the math in front of me, for the holidays just between November and December and the first of the year with New Year's, and carry that forward into the new year, you're carrying it forward at time and a half. And anything over 160 is paid at time and a half at a compensation time rate and a half. So, every 12 hours they work, they just additional six hours on top of it. And it's not as if I'm calling other shifts in cover unless it is a major incident within the county. I think we have sufficient, I'm not going to say sufficient because it's totally wrong, we're under staff. We get by with what we have and make do with what we have.
Yeah, and I think you're not, it just seems to me we've got an awful lot of chewing to do before we decide to spit.
Well, I'll disagree with you. If it's something to fruition with Mr. Gabriel's suggestion, it's certainly going, it's going to affect a lot of people in a lot of ways. But right now, I've never seen anyone within my office that hasn't had sufficient time with either compensatory annual or sick leave to be able to get through their Family Medical Leave Act. Any other questions, any other board members?
I know it's a difficult, Sheriff, in making sure that there's enough help out there to make sure that your employees are probably safe in the field because, and to, and I'm trying to think from your perspective and command staff perspective in scheduling people and making sure you have the appropriate coverage and replacement there. That's where I'm coming from in, in my thoughts.
Well, you're right. And I understand what phrase you're saying. We just can't go out and hire a part-time deputy sheriff because, first off, have any training certified, get a field training officer and get their paid certificate to be able to, to perform law enforcement functions in the Commonwealth of Virginia. That's just DCGA standard. So, that's changed a little bit over the years. Any board member have any questions? Any board member at any time? I'd love, 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 love that. Have you come by and just jump in the car and take a ride, spend a little bit of time with the deputies on days or evening shifts? Can't say you won't be sitting in court due and all the master circuit or...
Yeah, you might be a witness, may have to testify.
Bill, I think you've been in cars since some of the other ones have and you'll sit, you'll ride while I was in the front seat.
Appreciate you, Sheriff.
I'm suggesting, any other board members? Any other questions?
Is there something you want to tell us about? Is that what you're... Thank you.
I have a couple of things to think about. These are just things to think about, okay? We talked a lot about the Sheriff's Department, but if we really wanted to look at this overall, we'd have to sort of think too about the other county departments and, you know, like if there was a small department and somebody was out, you know, like how would that work in that department, be spread around? And you also need to think, or I guess I think about maybe because I'm in it, but, you know, when the county has a benefit over here, what happens then on the school side? If the schools say, "Well, the county has this benefit, you know, maybe we should..." Look, I can imagine it'd be very expensive on the other end, even though you could just hire substitutes and they don't pay them as much. But, I just thought I'd throw that into the mix. The other thing that I thought about is, it sort of echoes a little bit of what Tommy was saying about, you know, getting, hitting a certain group of people with a benefit. I'm coming at it sort of at the other end of life with paternity leave, when you have your parents that you have to take care of. And that's, you know, if you have accrued time, you can do Family Leave Act, but otherwise, you don't have any money and you might be making trips across the country or up and down the road. So, those are just things that I think about, like when you start talking about benefits in general. And I'm with Matt, I think it would be a, a good benefit to offer. But you sort of, when we start talking about, you sort of, I think, need to look at the whole picture of, you know, what your county's going to look like and, you know, and what you're going to do for your employees overall. And those are just some things I've been thinking about since all this came up.
Yeah, I have to agree with Mary, you know, with your, I have an aging mother, you know, she's 75, you know. If we're going to get down and give to people for maternity leave, we need to look at everything.
Say that again?
See, that's not old, is it? I'm going to say the aging mother.
I heard that, I heard that. Let me talk to you a little bit. I understand what you were saying.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, it's something we like to look at all where around.
Kind of, just, just three brief comments. One, one suggestion and then two comments. Would it be possible for Karen to perhaps anonymously survey some of the county employees and see if this is a benefit that they might actually want to, want to have? And if we get overwhelming response, then no, we don't care. Then maybe we should drop it for now. Or if we think that this is, or if they overwhelmingly say that, "You know what, this, this would be a wonderful benefit to have," then maybe it will help us reconsider things. The other two things are simply comments is that, one, I don't think anybody's disputing, and I'm certainly not disputing this, this won't cost us anything. I mean, we know it'll cost us something. I mean, in theory, we could go a whole year and nobody could have a baby and it won't cost us a single dime and it won't be a problem. That probably won't happen. All right, but is it worth it for us to spend that money to, to, to improve the lives of our employees? To allow them to have a better work-life balance, to be able to spend time with their babies? Related to that, this is my third thing, this is 2A, what I was saying of my comments, is simply that the world is a different place. When I had my son 10 years ago, he's 10 and a half years old now, my wife and I both worked full-time. And without the paid maternity leave that she had, I didn't have any leave, maternity leave, paid maternity leave she had through her private employer, we, we simply wouldn't have been able to survive. I mean, it simply wouldn't have been possible for us to even contemplate having a child at that time. So, and I think that's, that's more and more the, the norm nowadays is that you, you don't have a stay-at-home spouse who can be home with the child. You have to, you have to at least, someone has to be home with that child at least for the three months until you can find daycare and then you have to both go back to work and then that child has to go off to daycare. And the third thing is that, related to Todd and Mary's comments is that I absolutely agree with both of you. But, I would think, I would just simply caution in this situation is that we don't get caught up in trying to provide, in trying to do everything, which might not be possible when we could do one thing and then do the next thing after that. So, this might be a progressive situation in which, which progress moves a little bit slower than we would like, but at least it's movement towards something that we can all agree should be done. So, that's all I have to say right now.
Are we ready to move on to...
I like Matt's idea about survey and, and then maybe, and it, I don't know how hard it would be, but the exit interviews. If, I don't know if this is going to be an issue where people are going to private sector or they're going because, I guess since there's no one else offering this, I guess those exit interviews wouldn't necessarily have it.
Well, if they're going to private companies, and private companies offer this, many of them do. We could see if somebody said it in their exit interview.
But I don't know, having staff go digging for it, that's going to create a lot of work for staff.
The problem I see with that is that I can't imagine you offering anybody something that's not going to cost them anything. They don't say, "Yeah." Without looking at what it really is for them to cost them in. I mean, unless you're planning on figuring out some way to give it to everybody, I don't know how you go back.
Well, I mean, there, there's ways to phrase it. Instead of saying, like, "Would you like this free thing?" Yes, of course, I would like this free thing. Is that if you were offered this benefit, would you be more like, would you be more likely to leave your position in the next five years just about as likely or less likely? And then if people come up and say, "Well, yeah, if I had this, I probably wouldn't be thinking about leaving." Then, then maybe that would be a better...
And I think your responses are going to be, say that question would be skewed because the older people versus the younger people are going to respond differently. If I'm in that age-bearing category and I'm 22, 24, 25, and we're thinking about planning a family, I think, yes, I'm going to like it.
Well, if you'd like to get your time off from your grandchildren.
Yeah, I think you would have straight to that. It's true, but my 44-year-old friend who just adopted a child wouldn't, wouldn't be in that category, but certainly would be, you know, in favor of that if she were to work in, with the county, so.
But maybe we could ask, how important would this benefit be to you in ranking it? Is this something that would be very important to you or not very important?
Would they be willing to pay $10 after my father?
Nah, I couldn't see that, I mean, if it's there.
No, 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 but I mean, that would just be a good question. Is it worth $10 or is it worth $160?
Well, I think if, would it be good for her to do a draft survey form and send it to us for us to look at it and comment on it and then for her to send it out?
I mean, I'd rather have her touch base with somebody who works on surveys, like maybe somebody in Virginia Tech or Radford who does, like their survey research center, you know, coming up with statistically useful information. I mean, you know, I work at tech, but I'm just a historian. I don't know anything about surveys, so, you know. Me trying to help, you know, me trying to suggest questions is really not a great idea. So, I mean, I would be happy for them to run it, run it through, you know, people who do surveys for, you know, for, for a living and then send it to us and just say, "Is this okay?" That would be fine.
Is there like a cost to that, or do they have, like, they do it for free?
No, you can probably just contact one of the professors there or something like that, they'll probably do it for free.
Yeah, we don't pay any money. And then we don't want to, we don't want to make it so cumbersome and that she's got to spend a lot of time, you know, with it. At least that's my thoughts. We'll be glad to help any way we can.
I would not want them to look through exit interviews. I don't know that that is going to be very helpful, so I would withdraw that suggestion. But I wouldn't mind running a survey by just to see and to get an idea, especially with retention and promoting the family. I'd like to at least look, I wouldn't mind looking at it. I don't want to spend a lot of money, but it sounds like it's something that we might be able to do fairly inexpensively.
I agree with that. Thumbs up. And we're moving on to the next items.
Karen, is this possible to do this? Okay, and then what kind of timeframe do you think we could have some information back?
If we can have a group in a consistent manner, I would say a couple months.
Thank you. Ready to move on?
I just want to thank Carol and Angie and Karen again because there wasn't a lot of information out there when they started looking and they spent a considerable amount of time hashing through the information and Carol was kind of the quarterback to pull it all together, so thank you guys for your work on that.
And then the other interesting thing was finding out about the aging.
Oh, gosh. Well, Carol brought that chart in, I said, oh, Lord, because that's a whole nother issue that.
Yeah, we really appreciate your work on this project and it's a whole lot of it here.
One more, we got one more, we got sponsorship. And I can, I can probably make that fairly quickly. And this is under tab D. If you recall back in July, the board appropriated $1,500 to contribute to the Dixie Ponytail U softball team who went to the World Series, and I'll provide more information on that under my administrator's report. Supervisor Creed said, have we done that for others in the past? And I sat here and naively said, no, I don't think so. Well, the next day we did find that there was a policy that was adopted by the board back in 2007. A sponsorship policy for national championship events. And that policy said that the board, for individuals that make national championships from local sports teams, we would provide $100 and then if it's a team event, we would provide $500. We did appropriate money back in, I'm assuming we appropriated money back in 2007 to the Blacksburg team that was traveling. We've done it one other time and that was in 2011. We've appropriated money two more times. Once was for the Blacksburg Dixie League team in 2011 to the World Championship in North Carolina, and then our girls made the World Series back in 2012 and we appropriated $1,000 for them as well when they went to Alabama. The reason I asked that this be brought back up is I did get a call week before last from Chief Sisson, the police chief in Christiansburg, not in his role as police chief, but in his role as a parent of a daughter who was on the Christiansburg O-Zone softball team, which was sponsored by the town of Christiansburg. They were invited to the World Series down in South Carolina, I believe, and I'm, I do not have my note in front of me, but they won the state championship and were invited to the World Series and Chief Sisson called and said, I think you guys in the past have given money to other teams traveling outside the the state for national championships. And I said, yes, I did find out that we had done that, but had not had an opportunity to talk to the board about it. So, one, I wanted to make you aware that we did adopt a policy of $100 for individuals, $500 for teams. Since that time, we've made two $1,000 appropriations to Blacksburg in 2011, to the County Parks and Rec in 2012, and then just recently, we did $1,500 for the County Parks and Rec. And Chief Sisson was asking if the board would be willing to consider an appropriation, he did not specify an amount, to the Christiansburg girls. They actually traveled last week. And I told him that I would bring this to the board's attention and if there was any desire to do anything, that we would certainly provide that to them as a reimbursement. The town of Christiansburg, I did confirm with Barry Helms again today when I saw him, the town of Christiansburg donated $1,000. They have a policy as well within their Parks and Rec program that's basically automatic. If a team makes World Series, they appropriate funds through their budget. So they didn't have to have any town council action for that appropriation. So, one, we have done it, we have a policy that was adopted in 2007, and secondly, would there be any consideration from the board for the Christiansburg Girls O-Zone softball team that also went to a World Series?
They already banned?
Yes, sir, and I do, and I do not know the.
They done banned they lost.
They did, I don't know the results, but.
And I believe, didn't you say girls?
I thought it was girls.
If I'm not mistaken, at least that's the ones that I went over to watch over the art record.
Okay, I may, for some reason I got daughter hooked in my head at some point, so.
Where would that money go?
It goes to reimburse.
Would it reimburse the parents?
The parents.
Blacksburg Rec.
It would not reimburse Christiansburg Rec. It would go back to the, just as when our girls traveled, they raised a sum of money and it was dispersed among all the families to pay for the buses and the hotel rooms. This money, if the board decided to give money, would go back to the team to be dispersed out to the parents to cover the expenses related to the trip.
I know that team outran, we just give that money to, they raised $14,000 on their own.
Yeah, that trip cost $24,000.
$24,000.
Yes, sir. Our girls' trip cost $24,000.
Was that, went to Louisiana?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I know they were standing outside of all the Kroger stores trying to raise money, and they obviously did, but they were very appreciative of the amount that the county gave them.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, I heard that.
But it was not a lot, you know, comparatively, but it was a little bit of help.
But you know what, nothing in the world would do any better than to support us.
Oh, they are, and they were, they were the nicest kids, they really are.
I just have one question. In the past, when we've been, I've seen the attachment where it talks about the Blacksburg Dixie League teams that we've supported in the past. So that was not part of the County Parks and Recs program, but that we went ahead and have done that in the past, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's, if I'm remembering rightly, too, is that back in 2012, is that the reason that the amount was increased from $1,000 to $1,500 is because the Blacksburg teams had gotten $1,000, they had the town council support in addition to that, is because the county, because the county, we appropriated more money to the county teams because they couldn't go to a town. So the Christiansburg Town Council in this case had supported their team and so.
Right, and then the requests for the Christiansburg team, they're getting $1,000 from Christiansburg, but they asked for consideration from the county as well. And we did have precedent. I'm going to quit relying on my memory altogether because I didn't remember 2011.
So this money, if we do it, it will go back to the parents?
Yes, sir.
Go back to that.
To the thing, whatever.
Is it running that thing again for next year or whatever it may be?
Well, my understanding was that they would love to have that help offset their costs from this trip, so.
Do we have a figure, I mean, I'm seeing three different figures here.
Well, the policy that was adopted in 2007 said $100 for an individual and $500 for a team, but then we promptly didn't follow it and gave $1,000 to Blacksburg in 2011, $1,000 to the county team in 2012, and then $1,500 last month. Those are the three.
There might be something we want to revisit and actually set down how much we're going to pay, or it'll be automatic. You know, if county kids get so much and they don't have the other municipalities to go to and ask them for anything, then maybe we should give the county a little bit more funds than we do the ones who have somebody else that they can ask. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but that's something I think we really should look at and decide who gets what and when it comes time for it, it's done.
If we've done it in the past, I think we ought to be consistent, and that's just my thoughts on it, but if we had not helped Blacksburg teams, then we shouldn't help the Christiansburg team, but you know.
But it hasn't been consistent, that's just.
It looks like that there's the Dixie League team in 2011 was $1,000 and then it, Montgomery County, then it was $1,000 and then I guess there was a decision to increase it to $1,500. And I do remember that discussion because they didn't have anybody else to go to.
Right. I mean, I'd be like Gary, I'd like to go ahead and do what we want to do here and then come back and set what we're going to do from now on.
Well, when I first found that policy, I tried to read it to see if it gave me the authority to go ahead and give them $500, but it's, the wording wasn't real clear and then the other thing I wanted to make sure we understood is, well, the policy said 500, but every donation since then had been above that, so.
We could, you know, we've got some good athletes in this county and the smaller kids. You know, we could eventually work it to where we may have to pay 10 or 12 different teams, you know, because of different age groups, different types of things, again, basketball, softball, baseball. You know, there's many, many, many things, soccer. There's lots of things that these kids can go out and get a chance to go to state and if they get a chance to go to state, we need to buy them somewhere.
Yeah, I think that too, they got bull riding.
It's probably a good idea to revisit the policy and set something so that it's automatic. I mean, if we've been doing it, I think we, and I think we should continue to do it, though.
If the money's going to the parents which paid it at the start, I'd like to make a motion. We give them $1,000 this time and then come back and reevaluate the policy.
Can I suggest that once we come out of work session?
Yeah, we got to take a vote out there. You want to try to get consensus on that. Got to get consensus on that amount. Before we're talking too, I think when we look at August 07, when the policy was formed, $500 might have been a whole lot of money and it's not much money now, so we need to visit it. Yeah, before the downtown, we need to revisit revisiting, so to speak. And if we are through beating this a while, we can.
I was just going to say, I agree that it's a good investment in our, in our young people and I think it's good, it shows, you know, support for the the children that live within the towns. And just like the two towns support our libraries, they give money to the Christiansburg and Blacksburg libraries. I think it's sort of, it's good, it's really good positive move to do that and we can revisit, like you said, the policy.
It would be fine for me if we got together with the two towns and say, hey, do y'all want to have so much and we have so much and, you know.
Way to work together.
One thing too, it should be outside of the Parks and Recs budget. It should come out of our contingency or we should provide for it in the budget or how we do it.
Parks and Recs have enough.
We should not in any way say that it should come just out of their budget.
Take it from contingency. If we did it that way in the policy, it would still have to come back to you to be approved, but we could do that on consent agenda.
Other comments, questions, whatever? Need a motion to go on a work session?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call it a roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Did I hear some motion or something that came from somewhere?
Yeah, hello.
I'd like to make a motion, we give, as long as it goes to the parents, $1,000 and then we come back and revisit this.
And ask for the Christiansburg O-Zone team that made it to the World Series.
And it's to offset the cost of their expenses and so forth.
Right.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any discussion? Will the clerk please call roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Anybody want a two-minute break or want to go on through this thing? Okay, county attorney's report. You sure?
I am sure.
Okay, county administrator's report.
Three quick items. Had a good meeting this afternoon over at Virginia Tech regarding passenger rail service to the New River Valley. Had a lot of folks there, had somebody from Senator Warner's office, Senator Kane's office, Morgan Griffith was there, Joseph Yost was there. The lady who is now the chair, the head of DRPT was there. A very good meeting. We are moving forward with a study that's going to be conducted by the MPO concerning the feasibility for ridership from the New River Valley. I think that's going to prove very positive. If that does prove positive, then the next step is to begin working with DRPT on a more detailed study to determine exactly what rail improvements would be needed between Roanoke and here for that service. But very good meeting, things are moving forward and there's a lot of horsepower in that group trying to keep it moving. We've referenced the World Series a couple of times. Our girls went to Louisiana last week and made it all the way to the final game. Lost 10 to 2 to the defending World Series champions, Louisiana. It was quite a, quite a week, they were down there a week. And I think they had a good time, they were absolutely exhausted. They did beat. Yes, they did. And they did beat Louisiana once. They beat them, they beat them the first game, but then, I won't get too detailed, but you dropped in the loser's bracket and came back, and so they wound up playing them again in the final and Louisiana was the home team, so that probably helped too, but.
Run out of pitching.
It has, happens a lot with that age group, but it was a great, that's two times in three years that group's been to the World Series, so that's quite a, quite an achievement and I'm sure when we get an opportunity in the weeks ahead, we'll be recognizing them. And last thing I just wanted to say is August 1st was my five-year anniversary. I don't know where five years have gone around here, they've gone in a flash and got a lot of stuff to keep us busy for the next five years, so that's all I have.
You've done all right to survive those five years, you know?
It's been a ride.
Supervisor Tuck?
No report.
Supervisor Gabriel?
No real report, just attended the EDC meeting and the tourism meeting. There's a lot of really interesting stuff going on with tourism. I think you've been copying a lot of the emails about the Appalachian Spring and stuff like that. Also, the branding initiative for the county is, for the tourism, the county, I guess generally, is moving forward, we should hear more about that very, very soon. That's all.
Supervisor Kane?
I don't have no report, but I'd just like to say how much I appreciate each member here helping me with Old Sirewood. I tell you, I really appreciate that a lot and the people that lives there does too.
Supervisor Creed?
No report.
Supervisor Perkins?
Just a couple of things. Actually, our county administrator can tell us more about this, but I did attend the MPO meeting last Thursday, I guess it was, and our county administrator was re-elected as the chair of that group.
Thank you.
And also the secretary was Ann McClung.
Ann McClung from Blacksburg.
Blacksburg. In addition, it was a time to discuss the executive directors. And he was, Dan Drew was reappointed as the director of our MPO. I think it's going to be a very interesting MPO meeting when I go to Roanoke because we're going to have some reports on, and you might have seen just a little blurb in the newspaper too, and from others, maybe some emails we had about the fact that they are going to give up. to give a, a report on the study that's being done about the economic feasibility of the-
Intermodal.
Intermodal spot. Then, I also attended the annual meeting of the airport board, and things are moving along very, very much, very swift, really, for the South Gate interchange, as well as with the Huckleberry Trail movement, and then the extension of, of the airport. Virginia Tech will move all of the dairy barns and their production, everything that goes on there right now, with, by next summer, into Whitethorne, where they have their very large plots of land. And so, things are, things are really moving there, and you will see the, the results. I'm not sure exactly when, maybe 2018, or later.
Or later.
But at any rate, it's a very complicated procedure, but things have come together very well, and so, we can look forward to that. That's it.
Supervisor Biggs?
I'm just going to ask, like, if the county administrator could contact Ranger Lips and find out, you know, what, what's going to happen with that road, since it seems like now it's passed back over there. And then, the other thing is, I just wanted to report, I attended the Edson Issues Chamber Breakfast last Thursday, and Ms. Blackburn was the featured speaker, and she talked about the school system's new motto, which is engage, encourage, and empower. That means engage, encourage, and, and empower our students. And next month, September 4th, I believe Mr. Meadows will be the guest speaker, so any board member that might want to attend, it's at 7:30 in the morning at the Holiday Inn, just have to let them know, I guess, or let the staff know if you're going to attend, and be there, sir, for Craig. I'm sure he'll do a bang-up job with us, but just so you know, he's doing the program.
It's awful early.
What's your topic?
What's going on in Montgomery County.
Well, you might be up right there for days.
I know, I got to whittle, whittle, whittle.
I have nothing to report, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.